Good evening. I should like to call this Fairfield City Council Housing Authority, Paradise Valley Maintenance and Monitoring District meeting to order this evening, December 19th. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Bertani.
Here.
Councilmember Moy.
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro.
Vice Mayor Tim.
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here. And our invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Pamela Bertani, please. Pamela?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. God, in this season, we thank you for your abundance and for your grace. We remember again and again and again the birth of Christ our King. So I pray that as we proceed on our separate paths through this holiday season, that we're ever mindful of the true meaning of this season. And not only to remember the birth of Christ, but remember who Christ is and what he stands for. And bless us to be blessings to others in this world. So bless us now in this time and place. Bless us with safe travel. Bless us, the leaders of the city, to make good decisions on behalf of our people. Bless everyone here and in the sound of my voice. We pray, God, for happy holidays with family and friends, and bless us to bless others. It is in the name of Christ we pray it all, and in the name of God I declare it done. Amen.
And would you rise and join me as we renew our pledge, through our nation's flag?
I want to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council reports. Councilman Vicaro, would you like to begin, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always good to see a crowded room here. I just wanted to wish everybody a safe and happy holidays, and also to remember that there's a lot of people out there during our holiday season that are in the cold, and a lot of our young people that are, they don't get the same things that maybe some of our others get because they're not quite as privileged. And just remember that whatever you can give during this time to the people that are suffering a little bit in our community, and as we know, there are quite a few, to lend your hand and help. And after that, I know it's kind of late, so I won't go on and on, but I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday, and please be safe out there, and enjoy the time with your family. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and for watching from home. And I will just echo my colleagues' comments. I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and enjoy your families. It's the best time of year, and be safe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Your Councilwoman Moy, please.
Q. To all the residents and everybody here, I wanted to say first that we, I think all of us, were at the opening of what's called Damascus House. And it was put together, the partnership between a couple of nonprofits who work with homeless, and with some very, very generous folks who own housing, houses, in Fairfield. And they grew up in the valley with me, very, very good people. And also with a pastor and a church who had a vision. And today, four young men who were previously homeless because they had gotten out of prison or other situations like that, and now they've earned their way and pay their own way for this house that they share, and they also pay for their programming. And it's a brilliant, brilliant way to put together, it's a, to put together a program that serves homeless people. So I wanted to congratulate them on that and let the people of this city know that people that we don't even talk about every day are working with people who are out in the cold, and who are hungry, and who want to be better. And part of that healing comes with having a shelter. So I wanted to congratulate them for that. I also wanted to tell you about this morning, over at Heather House Homeless Shelter, the fifth graders from KI Jones came, and they brought goods for the shelter, and they learned about the children who were there. And they also all gathered coins at the school, and they raised $300, which is what I need to feed every person inside that shelter for a month, because I buy my food from the food bank. And we also get donations of food. So these children together did this. And I told them the story of one little boy who came into the shelter, and he was so happy for Christmas, not for presents, but for him, that he had a toilet, and he didn't have to hold to go potty, because he didn't have anywhere to go in Fairfield on the streets. And so when we talk about this season, we talk about what, you know, what is Jesus about? Hanukkah is also now, Happy Hanukkah. We talk about the miracles there. And that's what it's about. So I wanted to share that and tell you about how these children are helping children. And some of them signed up to come and read to our young children a couple times a month. I asked them to be mentors to our children, and that's what they're going to do. And I want to thank everybody here who's come forward and helped too. And then I just wanted to tell you that I know, because I'm helping somebody to bring a fabulous new restaurant into downtown, I can't tell you much more about it, except for to say, if you have not been into downtown to eat, then you are missing out. If you, this restaurant is actually from Napa, coming to Fairfield. And if you want some good food, you just wait. Don't wait, actually. Go down there now, because there are some great ones down there right now. And Margaret Manzo and the Downtown District are friends down there. They do a lot of that. Our city folks down here do it. And then big mouths like me, who go and beg people to do that, they also do it too. So that's how we hustle. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Just a couple of things. This is probably, it's a great time to be here. It's a great season. And in the past week, several of us have been involved with Fun on the Run. And for those of you that don't know, it's a program through the city and funded by a lot of donations. But anyway, we're giving away toys. And it goes on almost daily in different neighborhoods. And last week, we were off of First Street, and we gave away 465 toys. That's one toy per child. There were so many kids there, and they were just ecstatic. But you get to see the look on their face, and brand-new toys that have been donated. And we put them up, and they come up, and one at a time, they get to pick something. And you just, I don't know, maybe selfish, but it gives you a warm feeling. And it will continue, and it will go on this week as well. So it's terrific. Fun on the run. Number two, Captain Bill Limneos from the Fire Department, just retired. And although he's probably not here tonight, he's gone, he had his last ride home in the Tiller Fire Truck. And for those of you that saw his post on Facebook, quite an achievement, and I just wanted to tell him thank you. And then number three, just as personal to me as George Hicks. This is George's last city council meeting. George is going to go. He's our Public Works, he's going to, he's our Public Works Director. And professionally and personally, I want to say thank you. I have learned so much from him. When you get elected to be a city council member, obviously, there's a lot of stuff you don't know, and especially dealing with public works. Everything from infrastructure to pipes, everything that makes the city run. But one of the things, he developed a formula, we went up to Senator's Office in Sacramento, and where he's pitching for Fairfield, called Center Line Miles. I had never heard that before. George, 450 Center Line Miles in Fairfield? Asphalt, that's a lot, a lot of roadway. But anyway, I, from the bottom of my heart and my colleagues, we wish you the best. I will miss your smiling face here. But well done, my friend, and congratulations on your retirement. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'll make mine, I'll make my report very brief also. Fun on the Run, the Levin, those programs are making such a significant difference in Fairfield. And the program, Damascus House, that Councilwoman Moy mentioned, what an incredible event occurring in Fairfield. It's one of the reasons that so many folks come from far and wide to spend some time in Fairfield. And we're very privileged tonight. You'll meet them in a few minutes. But we have our sister-city students from Nierisaki, Japan. They came all the way. They arrived on Saturday, and they'll be here for three weeks. So welcome. Good to have you with us. And then some really good news, and then a bit of a concern. Let me read this to you. PG&E and California Fire Foundation will be uniting to aid local fire departments and fire associations with fire prevention initiatives. To that end, then, the Pacific Gas and Electric Company will be donating $1 million to the California Fire Foundation to help firefighters throughout California prepare for, prevent, and mitigate climate change-driven disasters. And that'll be, if all goes to plan now, that'll be at noon to 1:00 on January 3rd, at the fire station over on the corner of Kentucky and Pennsylvania Avenue. So that's good reason to be celebrating this holiday season. But let me also ask you, as you enjoy the holiday season, and you celebrate as you choose to do, bear in mind, there are still firefighters, some of them from Fairfield, who are battling the fires in Southern California. Please keep them in your prayers and be patient. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Good evening. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas. I have a few things that I want to report on. One is a big thank you to Felix Reisenberg, our Assistant Director, Public Works Head of our utilities. And why I'm thanking him is because of his proactive stance right now. The State Water Resources Control Board is debating regulations that will restrict the use of water throughout the state. And unfortunately, they tend to paint things with a broad brush. And so Felix is working hard right now with outside counsel, and plans on responding to those regulations and advocating strongly for the city of Fairfield. And so as that letter and those comments get put together, I plan on sharing that with you. And we will be speaking with you in the future about ways that we can work with you to help advocate for Fairfield's stance, because what is being considered right now will have some serious negative consequences. One of the ways in particular that I want to point out to, could it possibly impact the Rancho Solano area and down in the Cordelia Green Valley area? So what the state is looking at is prohibiting the use of water, potable and non-potable water, for watering medians. And so right now, we have already scaled back and made changes so that the medians that we do landscape is done with non-potable water. But the state wants to restrict that as well. And so that could become with a very high cost to the city. So that's why we're taking this very seriously. And there's a number of other regulations as well. The second thing is, I want to share a brief presentation with you. So we struggled on the agenda tonight to bring together a couple of things, and we think this is the best way to do it. We put together a real quick presentation for you. And, you know, in the audience right now, we've got a number of different people that are very important to advancing the vision of Northeast Fairfield. And right now, what you see right there is an aerial of Northeast Fairfield earlier this year, last year. And so in the audience tonight, we have, obviously have Lewis Builders, we have Zach Wright is here for the item in front of you regarding the CFD. Tom Martian is here. He's our construction manager. And we have an item for you tonight about the train station going on. And obviously, we have another item pertaining to the train station for you as well. And what I want to take you quickly through is a progression of the vision for Northeast Fairfield, because it's starting to really come together, and it's starting to happen in a very exciting way. And I think it's important that we share this and look at it in its totality. So the first thing is, we have public infrastructure. So the train station is open, it's operating, and it's doing very well. And at the same time, to support that, we have Nathan Atherton here, who represents FAST. And one of the items we have in front of you is to make route changes to our bus system. And as you can see, what that will do is create an infrastructure backbone for what is going to be some pretty amazing development. So the first thing is our train station-specific plan. So this is a project that is just in the beginning stages of getting underway. They've secured some construction financing. And that is about 6,800 units of housing, 300 acres of commercial development. And we expect next year to start seeing some sticks come out of the ground. We have another project that's a bit more hypothetical right now, but it's called Hawthorne Mill, and that's about 1,000 units of housing with some small commercial development. And what you can start seeing on this slide is the development that occurs really around the focal point of that train station, and how changes in our bus will help support that development. And then last, but certainly not least, is our Villages at Fairfield project. And this, what you see right now happening in Northeast Fairfield is really quite wonderful. So if you've been out there recently, you've seen the sound walls going up, there's rocking operations going on, all the grading has occurred, and that's another 1,800 units of housing. And the item we have before you is to get some financing going so that the infrastructure work can continue. So right now, in Northeast Fairfield, with the public infrastructure we've put in place, we have about 10,000 units of housing at some form of planning stage or actual construction at this point. And this really bears the strong mark of this city council that has been visionary and forward-thinking over many, many years to make this happen. And it's exciting to see it all come together. So I just wanted to share that, because it's a real strong theme in tonight's council meeting, in terms of the number of items that we have in front of you. I would be remiss if I didn't pick up on Vice Mayor Tim, and also, you know, publicly acknowledge and thank George Hicks for his tremendous years of service with the city of Fairfield. I was very lucky to have been in his retirement party. And I will tell you what I want to comment on in terms of George Hicks's legacy, which is going to be long-lasting in the city, is twofold. One is just in terms of the infrastructure that he's improved and brought to the city. He's really been on the forefront of some really wonderful projects for the community. He's maintained tremendous water facilities, brought back some strong investment in our road. And what is also notable is the staff. So George has a tremendous staff. So George has a tremendous staff. He has leaders. He has very great managers, all the way top to the bottom. And that's really important, because George has spent a lot of time, and he's always thought long and hard about succession and bringing in the best. And so in the audience, you see just a number of these talented individuals. Pat Giles, who we'll be talking about, Fred Beiner, Nathan Atherton's in the back, Julie, our soon-to-be director in just a couple of days, Paul, and I can go on and on. And I'm just really proud and impressed of all that he's done. And I just really want to, once again, thank him very much for everything. You've been just a wonderful department head and a great public works director. So thank you, George. And then I want to turn it over to our city attorney, who has a brief report as a follow-up for you on an item that came from an earlier council meeting.
Yeah. Question came up regarding our purchasing ordinance and the purchase of police vehicles. And there is a provision in the code that does provide that before we go to bid, the council will direct bids to be requested. And then that comes back to the council once the bids are received for approval of the bids. And we have not followed that practice for some time. And is there any legal ramifications from that? So we have looked further at that question. And first, just a little backdrop on this provision. It was something that was very common years ago in ordinances throughout the state and really has pretty much fallen by the wayside in not being done. It really just adds a necessary step in the process. Council always has a power to say yes or no at the end of the day when the bids come in. So it doesn't take away, whether that process or that procedure was followed or not, doesn't take away from your power to say, yes, we'll award the bid and make the purchase, or you'll say, no, we don't want to do it. In Fairfield, most of the items that come before you actually are budgeted, so that the council, in fact, has contemplated the project, or the purchase, I should say, within the course of the budget itself. You know, some are not, and there have been times when the staff has come to the council and request some direction of whether to purchase something. Sometimes staff assumes this is something the council would be interested in, but at the end of the day, you have the right to say yes or no. We looked at case law on this, and there's nothing directly on point. But there are some very old cases in California that say on bidding procedures or processes where there's a part of that process that's not material to the ward of the contract itself, it's just one procedural step, and it's not followed. It doesn't impair the contract or make the contract unlawful. Again, if the council or the legislative body has approved the contract properly, then that's a contract that is correct. So our recommendation at this point in time is to continue with this process. We are working on a modern, I would call it a modern purchasing ordinance that'll come to you in the future. That will be a reflect more current practices, and we would actually be recommended at that point in time to take that one provision out of the code, because, again, it really only creates more staff time and doesn't affect how you decide whether or not to purchase something. So that would be our recommendation at this point in time to proceed as we have. And then, again, we will be coming to you with a revised ordinance in the future.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, I do. And Greg, I thank you for the update. And I think maybe going forward, because like you said, it was about $350,000 worth of police vehicles. And I think sometimes there's a confusion when we put out our agenda that we know this is coming, and a lot of people say, why does the council have to vote on this? I think if there was maybe a line or an indication in the, in our agenda where it says, you know, a budgeted item, because we do know about this. And that way, I think perhaps then the public won't... It's not a surprise.
Right.
So if, maybe going forward, it just might be easier, and that would perhaps allay some of the concerns from the citizens. But I think we appreciate the update. Thanks, Greg.
Very good.
Thank you, Greg. And Mr. City Manager, are there any changes, additions, deletions to the agenda? Okay. Madam Clerk, your report, please.
I just wanted to welcome the students from Nierisaki, Japan. And I had the pleasure of meeting them on Sunday at their holiday party at the Adult Recreation Center. And it was really fun to watch them play musical chairs. And also, they played a game with the mayor, and it was really cute. Anyway, welcome.
Thank you. And we turn to presentations. We have three this evening. Madam Clerk, our first one, please.
And we have Arletta Courtwright, Sister City Chair. And she will introduce the Fairfield-Nierisaki Sister City Students from Nierisaki, Japan.
Good evening. It's a real pleasure to be here. We haven't been able to come to a council meeting with the students for a few years, because we just haven't had a council meeting while the students were here. But it worked out this time. So we've had a Sister City with Nierisaki, Japan, our relationship for 46 years now. And for the past 30 years, we've been exchanging student groups back and forth. Our students go in July, and their students come over here in December to spend three weeks. They stay with host families, and we couldn't do this program if we didn't have local families who are willing to volunteer their time and take a student into their homes for three weeks. So we really appreciate all they do. One of the very nice things this year is that five of the six students who went to Japan last summer, their families were able to host students this year. And three of those families are hosting a student from the family that their child stayed with in Japan. So it's a really nice relationship that gets set up. I just would like to ask our host families who are here tonight if they would stand up and be acknowledged, because it is, it's a big commitment, and we really appreciate So we have six students with us. Five of them are from junior high school in Nierisaki, and one of them is a high school student. They also have their teacher chaperone, who is with them, Mao Yamagata. And we also, this year, new, new this year, is we have a representative of the city of Nierisaki with us as well. So Nami Shimura is with us as well. So I'm going to go ahead and have each of the students come up and introduce themselves to you. And we're going to start off with Mune Yoshi.
Hello. My name is Mune Yoshi Oshiba. I'm 13 years old. I'm in Nierisaki East Junior High School. I love basketball. My hobby is playing basketball and playing the drums. I'm honored to be able to come to Fairfield City. I'd like to have a time, a good time with my future days. I love Fairfield. Thank you.
Satoshi will be next.
Hello. Hello. My name is Satoshi Aikawa. I'm 30 years old. My hobby is reading books. My, I, I'm a student of Nierisaki East Middle School. I thought, enjoy, enjoy, I enjoy this program. I'm, I'm very fun now. Thank you.
Next, we have Kazuki.
Hello. My name is Kazuki Yamamoto. I'm 14. So I am in a junior high school second, second grader. I like sports. I play basketball and soccer. So I want to deepen the relationship with foreigners by doing sports. I love Fairfield. Thank you.
Now we'll have Wakka come up.
Good evening. My name is Wakashimizu. I'm 13 years old. I live in Nierisaki. I'm a Nierisaki Nishi Junior High School student. I can play the saxophone, so I'm in the brass band club. I want to talk about many people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ayaka.
Good evening. My name is Ayakai To. I'm 14 years old. I'm a second grade student at Nierisaki West Junior High School. My hobby is listening to music. I often listen to, listen to western music. I want to know American culture, and I want to talk to many people in English. Thank you.
And now Chino Mi.
Hello. My name is Chino Mi Onagi. I'm six years old and co-first high school student. My hobby is calligraphy, listen to music, and brass band. My dream is elementary school teacher. I want to learn about America, and I want to make a lot of friends. Thank you.
And now Ms. Yamagata is going to say a few words.
Good evening. My name is Mao Yamagata. I'm a, I'm a junior high school teach... Ah, sorry. I'm a junior high school teacher in Japan. I'm glad to come to America with this project. I'd like my students to learn about America a lot. Thank you.
We're really excited to have the opportunity to share the holiday season with them. So thank you very much for sharing your time with them, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Arletta.
I think for benefit of our audience, both here as well as at home, I explained to the students and their chaperones yesterday when they were touring City Hall that our council meetings are televised. And the city manager explained that they'll be able to watch themselves on DVDs, or they can watch on the Internet. And that caused them a little bit of anxiety, because it is 12:40 noon tomorrow in Nierisaki, so perhaps at their school, students are watching them perform very well this evening. And we are delighted that you are with us. Thank you very much. Enjoy your time here. We turn then to Presentations, number two, please. Madam Clerk?
Parks and Recreation Winter/Spring Activity Guide Presentation by Parks and Rec. Director Ann Matola.
Good evening, Mayor Price, members of the council. Thank you for another opportunity to spend some time with you to talk about what's happening in the Parks and Recreation Department and to highlight some of the programs that are included in our winter/spring activity guide. I'd like to start off by highlighting some of the partnerships that we have, which are new or continuing in this coming season. So Debbie Swim School, it's a, it's a group we've been working with that's been providing some swim lessons at the aquatic complex, usually in the off-season when our lifeguards go back to school. So starting this spring, Debbie Swim School will be teaching our water aerobics classes. And the partnership is kind of interesting, excuse me, because it's a result of some work that our staff has been doing with the water aerobics community. The relationship that we've developed in the last year has been encouraging feedback from them on this program that we have here with water aerobics compared to other programs that they've attended. And so after we've tried things with different methods of teaching, and we worked with Debbie Swim School for a while, we decided that we would have them teach the classes. And the benefit of this is that all of the instructors through Debbie Swim School have a specialized training in Aqua Exercise Association, in aquatic fitness. And the specialized training allows them to expertly accommodate needs of all different levels within the fitness, water fitness programs that we offer. We're also continuing our partnership with Sustainable Solano. In the Fall Guide, they offered a couple of classes at the Danell Nature Center and Education Center. And so we worked with them, again, to expand what they're doing. And we're going to have four free public workshops, different education programs on various topics, including sustainable backyard and landscaping, and secondary water solutions. And I probably have to attend that, because I really don't know, don't know what it means. But it's about more sustainable ways of gardening and landscaping within your home. And so, again, I, we've heard really great feedback from them, and they've offered to expand what they're offering in our community. So we were scooped a little bit by Council Member Tim, but we didn't want to let tonight go by without also acknowledging this amazing partnership that we have with the Fairfield Community Services Foundation. This time of year, this week, we actually started midweek last week, is our annual toy drive. And this is an amazing partnership, not only with the Community Services Foundation, but truly with our whole community. This year, we're anticipating that we will be giving out about 1,200 toys. After our experience at Grace Church, where we gave out over 400, our elves went to work, and between our Fire Department and Nancy Hopkins from the foundation, we've been receiving more toys over the last couple of days. And so it's been such an amazing experience. In this year, I mean, the Fire Department has always been part of it. The Police Department shows up, but they've really been stepping up in being at all the different sites last week and this week to engage with our youth. Again, this is probably one of the proudest things that we do. I think as a city, we all come together as a team and work with the community. So I wanted to highlight that one as well. In our effort to expand programs and offer camp programs and more classes, we have, we are working with two new youth sports contractors, Airblair Athletics and the National Academy of Athletics. And they're going to be offering a number of spring break camps. Again, we've really been offering a handful, so we're going to expand the number more than double the number that we're offering. So we have a number of week-long spring break camps that are going to be based around the fundamentals of various sports. We have a cheer and dance camp, which we haven't had in our city for quite some time. And then National Academy of Athletics will also continue through the year and offer a T-ball in a coach pitch league. Let me try this. There we go. Okay. As we continue to expand our different classes, we'll be offering a new salsa class at the Adult Recreation Center. And for those that really want to try something new but aren't really high on commitment, we have this really, these really great one-day class series on how to learn to play guitar, piano, or ukulele. I recommend that you check those out, and you may see me in the ukulele class. I'll try something new. We also include in our Activity Guide city focus pages, and what we like to do is use this, the Activity Guide as a vehicle to highlight not just the Parks and Recreation programs, but the different programs that are offered in other parts of the city and through community partners. So within this guide, and actually, we include in every guide information on the PALS Center and the Youth Commission, we're highlighting the Restaurant Week and Art Show that's coming up in March. And we always have some information on the Sister City program. And on the inside back cover, we have a handy reference from Code Enforcement that includes how to report concerns using the My Fairfield app. Excuse me. Our special events pages have a lot of events that are happening throughout the city. So our Adult Recreation Center, there, we have an open house here that is actually being sponsored by the Friends of the Fairfield Senior Center. So it's a great opportunity for active adults in the community to come see what's happening there at the center. We also like to place on this page other things that happened at the Adult Recreation Center. A couple examples are the Kickoff Travel Presentation in January, and they have a Mardi Gourou event that's coming up in February. We had to reschedule our open house for the Senior Day Program. It was originally scheduled during the fires, so it's rescheduled for March 14th. It's a really great opportunity to come and see a very special program that we have where we offer a daycare for people that... We really focus on people with Alzheimer's and various forms of dementia. We're going to have a spring swim event to celebrate the reopening of our pool after the end of the replastering project. Excuse me. And this Activity Guide caps off with the Earth Day event that happens at the City Hall Campus in April. I also wanted to put in a little self-promotion here for the Parks and Recreation Department itself. We have our open house that's going to be held in February, and it's, it's an all-hands-on-deck event for the Parks and Recreation Department. All of our departments are there, all of our staff are there. It's a very active and interactive event where you get to kind of experience some of the different programs and services that we offer, and you get to meet our staff. So it's an opportunity to find out who we are, where our programs are located, and really get to meet the professionals that are out there every day providing these services to the community. Before I go, I also wanted to share with you how things are growing within the department. within the department and the community we're serving. We wanted to track the customers, the customer data from just before we started to re-release the activity guide and then after doing it for a year. And so we've been working with IT to put a map together and to track things and with this kind of GIS format. Because we really wanted to visualize and see the areas of the community we're serving, those we're not, where we're growing, where we may have to target marketing, marketing a little bit differently. And so in this map, what you see, the red, the red bars are what are, um, the number of households that were participating in classes in fiscal year 2015, 16. And then the green is the activity guide, which was like our whole year of an activity guide. And you'll see that there are upticks throughout the map where we've had growth. But if you really want to know how the numbers break down, we deliver our activity guide to about 42,000 households. And of that, we have program participants registering from 3,017 Fairfield households. Now that reflects 7% of all the households that we distribute the guide to. And at first glance, you're like, oh, okay, we certainly have room to grow. But there's a really great number if you look a little deeper. And of the 3,017 households, that's an increase of 404 households within one year. So we had a 15% increase in new households that are participating in our programs. So we really feel that we're making progress in the right direction. The information, as we look at it and we're starting to really look at it closer and we have other maps that show more details of where people are registering, it'll give us an idea of where we need to focus marketing and even survey the community on the types of programs that they'd like to see in the near future. And so that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Come answer questions for Anne. A compliment, Anne. A week ago yesterday, the Holy Spirit students did a concert at the Adult Recreation Center. Very, very well received. So you're putting seniors with young musicians, I think is going to be a really good sounding program. No pun. It'll be great. Thank you very much. And our final, final presentation, Madam Clerk, number three.
The Homeless Engagement and Response Team, HART. Update by our Public Works Director for Two More Days, George Hicks.
George was never known for his ability to use technology, so excuse us.
I don't do well without a lot of help and adult supervision, so, uh, well, anyway, thank you for accommodating me tonight. I wanted to give a, a quick presentation on kind of our Public Works effort for the homeless, um, the homeless strategy. I wanted to ask Pat Giles, our Public Works Superintendent, to kind of come up and join me. As the council knows, we've been dealing with the homeless problem. We've been dealing with it since the homeless problem has been in existence. But it's just been growing kind of out of, out of control. And it, it really had raised itself to one of the forefront, to the forefront of community issues over the last few years. Citizens have a, a growing concern about it and rightfully so. The council has a growing concern about it. And so the council directed staff to kind of come up with a plan and to address the problem. We have a comprehensive plan as a city. We have the hit team. We have some investments we're making in transitional housing, which were mentioned tonight. You know, kind of a multi-departmental and, and approach and effort to addressing the homeless problem. But Public Works has a role to play in this. And Public Works, uh, by and large, was, is roadside debris, shopping carts, and homeless camp cleanups. And we've been struggling to kind of pull our load and to do, um, kind of our share, contribute towards the solution as a department for a number of reasons. Staffing and whatnot, but we've been cleaning up a lot of camps and doing a lot for years. But they've been undermining the effectiveness of all the rest of our operations, which we have very few people out doing important things in the community. All that stuff was slowing down. There were starting to be ramifications for that. Morale was dropping. It's, it's not a fun job. So rather than admit defeat, I got, I got to commend Pat Giles. Pat Giles, um, understood what the community wanted. He understood the problem. Had very limited options. So he really put his, his mind to the problem. And he came up with the brainchild of what we call the HART team, our Homeless Engagement and Response Team. And we presented that to the council. We were, we're appreciative of the council showing the leadership and funding that program with the last budget. And as soon as the budget was adopted, we got the program started and Pat led that effort. Pat gets up at four o'clock in the morning. He spends the first three hours before his day starts out in the community, talking to homeless people, um, getting the program running, getting the, the, the day lined out. So when his resources come in, he can deploy them effectively to address the problem. We've been limping along because we have, we've been using, um, part-time labor and that stuff to, to fund the, the team. So it's really required a lot of effort, uh, from Pat. But through his leadership and through his dedication to the problem, to, to solving the problem and addressing it, I think we've been extremely effective. So I, I wanted to start with a, just a quick, um, presentation, some kind of before and afters. Just for those of you who haven't seen, got a couple of before and afters on homeless camps. This is the kind of thing that existed in our community, um, before this HART team got involved. This is Waterman, the interchange at Waterman Boulevard in I-80. 15 cubic yards of debris right there. There's a before and after picture. Here's another one, a homeless camp on Red Top Road, a before and after picture. 22 cubic yards of debris. And here's a homeless, homeless camp in Solano Business Park where he had 44 cubic yards of debris. These things are occurring behind people's homes. They're occurring, popping up adjacent to businesses. They're just an ISO for the community and, and one heck of a problem. In terms of stats, in the, in the first, we're not even fur- through the first six months of this program, this team has really made a tremendous impact. They've, they've 1,360 hours, some stats up there. 262 camps abated, 1,209 cubic yards of debris. And those, most of you know what a 10-yard dump truck, the big dump truck, looks like. That's more than one dump truck every single day since July 1st getting removed from this community. You know, and 209 transients have been encountered in the process. Terms of illegal dumping, roadside dumping, some staggering statistics there. I, I was surprised at the 620 cubic yards of debris removed as part of that program. And again, there's a, a transient, um, connection with that effort. In terms of shopping carts, um, here's the shopping cart, cart problem before this HART team got involved. And here's just, you know, a day's worth of roundup of some of the shopping carts they're picking up out of the community. Now, we're just part of the effort. We have the, stores have some resources out there. We have some contractors. But this team is doing an awful lot to address the shopping cart removal. And there's the, uh, stats for the, uh, shopping cart removal. In terms of, uh, the, the community, the, these stats are important because it's a supply chain. All those, all that debris you saw out there, if it's not picked up, it's going to stay in the community. It's going to blow in the wind. It's going to move via shopping carts from one camp to the other. And we are, we're, this is part of a team approach. We're kind of fighting the tide. But these, these folks are making a difference. And I don't know about you, but I live in this community and I got tired of seeing shopping carts. I couldn't drive five minutes in this community without seeing 10 or 15 shopping carts six months ago. And I struggle to find one at this day and age. That's because these guys are out at four o'clock in the morning, finding them, getting them picked up, getting them off the street. And they're also, uh, one of the beautiful things is they've got a relationship, compassion, but very firm, with the homeless. And it's not just reactive. They're, they're actually, there's a proactive element to this. Pat has a great demeanor and his folks do about telling the homeless, "You can't do that in this community. And if you do, I'm going to be on you every day." "You, you can't live like this. You can't spread your, we, we understand you're homeless and we, we have resources for you. We're compassionate. We're not out here to be mean to you or give you a bad time, but you can't do this in somebody's front yard, backyard, side yard. And if you do, I'm going to be on you every day cleaning up after you." It's to the point where he goes to homeless camps now. It used to have to have the hit team come, the, the PD, and help move the people along. That was, it took a lot of resources and we'd have to clean up the camps. He's got people where he comes, posts the camp and when he gets there, they've got the trash bagged up, ready for him to pick up. I mean, it's, it's just amazing. I mean, I, I can't say enough how proud I am of Pat and his, his team and the effort they have. You really put forth to solving this problem and the impact they made. We took what was unsustainable and inefficient and he's made it, through your funding and, and your leadership, sustainable and efficient. And I think really contributing to the effort. I wanted to ask Brandon Garcia and Rick Joyner to come up. Now, we've been working, as I, as I mentioned, um, with temporary employees and some volunteer folks in Public Works to kind of make this, uh, team work over the past six months. These, this is our A-team. We, we, we advertised for the position and my, to my surprise, we had half a dozen people that really competed for it, that wanted to be part of this. It's that innovative and that dynamic. These are the best. I got a great crew at the Corporation Yard. We do, is the best of the best. So these two guys are going to be hitting the streets. They're going to be working under Pat's leadership. That's going to eventually transition back to Mike Gray. At the, because can't afford to have Pat spend that much time on it. And, and when these guys get up and running, he's going to turn it over to Mike. And I think what you've seen in great things in the past are going to be fantastic things going forward with these folks. So I just wanted to introduce them. If you see them, they have a tough job to do. I won't even get into describing the details of what they have to do. These people are fantastic. They're energetic. Anybody that wants to tell them thank you, honk the horn, give them a high five, please do. Because they got a tough job and they're really making a difference for Fairfield. So that's it.
Excellent presentation, George. A good way to end your career. But I would like people to know that the homeless problem is a great concern. And the fact that Pat Giles and his colleagues now have a very compassionate but firm approach is certainly making the difference that you clearly showed us. And then I'm going to steal the city manager's thunder a little bit. Colleagues, on January 17th at 6 o'clock, the city manager put together an expert panel who will be conducting a homeless workshop at the Downtown Government Center, and it's open to everybody. So please join us.
Mr. Mayor, I have a thing to say about Pat. Don't you leave the room and your guys. So, um, I want you to know, obviously, every day of my life for the last year and a half, I work with people who are homeless. And, um, and I also work around, um, in the downtown area where there is a concentration of social services. I know you guys are down there a lot. Um, I want to say that you guys are famous among the people who live on the streets. I, I talked to them myself, although the police chief has noted that it's probably not the smartest idea for me because some, it doesn't matter. But anyway, um, I wanted to tell you that last week, I was driving down Broadway, I believe it was last week, and I was driving along. I said, "What is that?" And it was a line of garbage. It looked like medical, uh, stuff. A big, like a trash dump of it all the way down a whole block. And I got, um, I pulled over and I got out and, um, looked both ways, kind of, and then walked out in the middle of the street to look at what that was. And I happened to see a Public Works truck down at the end. So I, you know, uh, made my way over there and I said, "Hey." I said, "What's going on?" And they said, "Oh, we're down here working on something else." I said, "Did you notice like this, it looks like medical waste?" And so I took pictures of it and he goes, "Oh, we'll call Pat's team. They'll be here in a minute. Don't you worry." And so I, I knew exactly what it was because I talked to the folks who live in some of these camps and so on. And anyway, uh, by the time I turned around, walked down, there was a gentleman, a neighbor who was standing there with a bag and he had gloves on. I said, "Sir, sir, please, I don't think that's good to touch." I wasn't sure if it was medical waste. And I said, he goes, "It's okay. I do it for a living. I clean up, you know, hazmat stuff." And I said, "Give me some gloves." So we got it all picked up. And Pat, you didn't have to, y'all didn't have to come out. I saved you so you can go to another stinky messy place. But I want to tell you how much we all in Fairfield notice what you're doing. We appreciate you. I appreciate the compassion you have for these people. Many are mentally ill and/or on drugs. And so, um, be careful out there and God bless you. You are doing a great service in this city and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Process for public comments. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Speakers may address items on this agenda at the time each item is considered. Under public comments, the public may speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council and may be referred to staff. If, to speak on an agenda item, please complete a speaker's card and give it to me prior to the time for public comment on that item. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to four minutes with one minute to summarize their remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't have any request to speak cards under public comments. Anyone choosing to speak? Okay, we will move on then to, no, no public comments. Now convene the meeting of the Housing Authority, please. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Bertoni.
Here.
Commissioner Moy.
Commissioner Vicaro.
Vice Chair Tim.
Here.
And Chairman Price. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the PV, MMD, or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Again, I don't have any request to speak cards. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar submitted? It's been moved by Councilwoman Moy, seconded by Councilwoman Vicaro. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Reconvene the meeting of the city council. And we have, again, the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, if you would, please, because I-
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to reapprove with one motion unless a member of the council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Again, I have no request to speak card, but Mr. City Manager, I have a, an email from John Takahuchi and he has a couple of questions about item number eight, if you would please. And his question is, is the $4.91 million requested in addition to the $9.72 million initially estimated? So that the total, is it really 14.63 million?
That is the total cost for the UPRR work, yes.
Okay. And then what is the cost to keep the train stop open? Where does this come from? Do fares contribute to this cost?
I will defer to Nathan or George on the cost to operate the train station. I don't have that information. In terms of the funding streams, it's planned to come from a combination of sources. So we use transit funding for the operations. Also, we plan on installing a charge-for-parking, so that'll be another source of revenue. And then going longer term, they're looking to do things like installing, uh, solar panels on the parking lot to generate electricity, to offset future electricity costs. I'll let Nathan, if you want to magnify that, please. Or Julie.
Got it. So specifically the ongoing cost for the train station?
Yes.
So there's about a $60,000 a year maintenance contract for, um, the city's costs. Amtrak and Capital Corridor are responsible for a number of the items on the platform itself. And those are all of the specific, um, our partners take care of the, the other costs. But about 60,000 a year.
And then his last question is, do the fares that commuters and other travelers pay, does that underwrite some of the cost?
That pays for the partners' costs. And then ours will be subsidized by the parking. So we will have a pay-to-pay, um, pay-to-park, um, program that's coming online that will help, um, our maintenance costs.
Okay. I think that answers John's question. Thank you very much. I don't have any request to speak cards. Anyone? I should like to pass, make a motion to adopt the consent counter as submitted. It's been moved by Councilwoman Bertoni, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We turn then to new business.
Number 20, first reading and introduction of ordinance 2017-18 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending Chapter 12E, Food Sharing Events of the Fairfield City Code to revise the requirements- city code to revise the requirements for food sharing event permits and clarify applicant's right to challenge permit decisions.
And our presenter is our city attorney, Greg Spannafish, please.
And the city attorney and I will handle this together. I just wanted to start off and give you a little bit of background about how this item came before you. And it really was in the spirit of cooperation and working with the community that we got to this point. So after council adopted the food sharing ordinance, the city attorney and myself were approached by legal services representing a number of different churches in town. And we met with them and they expressed a number of different areas of the food sharing ordinance that they would like to see amended. They talked about the deposit that we had. They talked about insurance requirements and they talked about the frequency of the events. And in looking at other components of our city code and looking at other components of our city fee program, what we put together was something that we felt was responsive to their requests. So the city attorney will walk through some of the specific elements of the ordinance. The one area where we were not responsive to was the frequency of the events. So we kept in the provisions about restricting the number of food sharing events that could incur within any community park and that could occur by any particular organization. But other than that, I think we did a pretty good job of representing and listening to their needs and making the appropriate changes.
The first change made has to do with the timeframe within which a permit application would be made and in order to process it properly, we have a 10-day requirement minimum before the event is occurring. We also had a provision saying it could not be applied for more than 90 days in advance. And there was a concern that that was being too limiting as to the timeframe within which to submit an application. So as long as we can keep the 10-day timeframe in order to give staff sufficient time to process the event, we have proposed of leading the 90-day requirement. So that does provide a little more flexibility for when someone puts together their application and gives it to the city. We've removed the general liability insurance requirement and also on the deposits, we've made the deposits consistent with what is done for picnic-type events. And the reason we deleted the insurance requirement right now for persons that want to reserve space in the park for some type of picnic or similar event, there is no insurance requirement. So we thought it was appropriate to make it consistent with how other park users are using the park. So with respect to insurance, no insurance now required. But again, if there's any damages, the permit applicant is liable for any damages or extra cleanup that is required. And on the deposit, the deposit will be based on the number of participants that will be attending the event. And in the past, there was a straight $500 deposit, no matter how many people attended. So we're now making this consistent with our picnic site reservation program. So they'll be geared to the number of attendees. When the permit is denied, we are now making it clear that we will send written notice of the grounds for denial within 15 days of the submission of the permit application. And during the hearing, if there's a hearing, when someone appeals a denial, they have a right to appeal. And we will keep an audio or video recording of that hearing. That's good practice, just to make sure there is a record of what happened at the hearing and the evidence submitted. And lastly, there's just a clarification that if a permit is denied after a hearing, that the person does have a right to go to court to challenge the city's decision. That's allowed by law right now. We're just making that clear within the ordinance itself. So those are the changes that are being made. Happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions, colleagues? I do have one request to speak card. Mr. Brian Denine, please, if you would come forward.
Good evening. I want to thank you for allowing me to come speak today. I'm Brian Denine. I'm president of Our Lady of Mount Carmel Catholic Church, St. Vincent de Paul Society. And we're one of the church organizations that approached the city about the food ordinance. And I appreciate allowing us to come speak with you about it and that your efforts that you put into it. The area of concern still is the frequency of which, distribution of food. First of all, I just want to share a little bit of what St. Vincent de Paul Society does in the areas around homelessness. We work closely with Officer Joe Yoshiba and Officer Mike. They use us for motel stays for folks that really do not belong on the street, that they can hopefully return to their families. And we also use the officers as far as available resources that they may know of. So we have a good working relationship with them. We receive daily contacts at our St. Vincent de Paul office for food and housing. And we go out and evaluate folks when they, and a lot of times they're in the parks. And one of our things that we use is food. You don't deny food. We provide food for folks that want to ask for it. But it's also a way for us to determine what other needs they may have, how we may be able to assist them, whether it's medicine that we can help them purchase or a motel room. So we do, we do go out and meet with them regularly. Third, we have a homeless outreach worker who, five days a week, goes out and serves the poor homeless within the community. And then we also work closely with the jails, the county jail, with the jail chaplain. Many of the inmates that are homeless, they were being set out with basically no clothing other than paper clothing. So we, we provide sweats, sneakers, and we do this on a regular basis through the jail chaplaincy program. I realize the homeless issue is a very difficult issue and you guys have a very difficult job to do. And I praise the work that individual members of this council do. I know they do great work with homeless. But serving the poor, serving the homeless is something St. Vincent de Paul has been doing for over 100 years and we do it responsibly. Our gentleman that provides food is a certified food person. He makes sure no, no waste is left after it when he distributes food. He also communicates with them daily and gets some resources that they may need, whether it's mental health or job, job information, or he'll put them to work. So food is a way for us to connect with folks. We use it responsibly. We also use it for spiritual reasons. We attempt to also to say prayer with these folks, to give them a little bit of hope. So that's our mission and I hope that the city and St. Vincent de Paul and the other churches can work together so we can do it on a regular basis responsibly. Thank you.
From a personal point of view, thank you very much for speaking this evening. And I think you'll find that the city is very eager to work cooperatively with you and we appreciate the many years of service. Any comments or questions, colleagues? Councilman Vicaro?
I'm real familiar with St. Vincent de Paul. I know it's a great organization and I, I am confident that the city will work with, you know, not only your organization but other churches too that have some concerns because of the kind of work they do, you know, with our needy families out there. Thank you for what you do too, sir.
Councilwoman Moy, any comment, please?
We know each other and you know how much I believe in what you all do, like you believe in what I do. And I personally want to just talk to you about some of this, but I know for sure, after talking with our city manager, and I know my colleagues very well, very compassionate people who would give you the shirt off their backs. And I know several of us are Catholics and give to St. Vincent de Paul. So, you know, we don't want you to stop loving on human beings who are out there at all. You know, we're just trying to control things. And I'm sure that staff has talked to you about that. And I would just like to say thank you and God bless you and every one of the people that you touch, especially those who are coming out of jail. We've seen them, I've seen them walking down the street with not much on. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. So our action is to waive further reading, read by title only, and then introduce the ordinance for first reading. Madam Kirk, if you would, please. Want to read it again?
No, title already has been read, so we're good to go.
Is there a motion to approve? It's been moved by Councilwoman Vicaro, seconded by, the motion was made by the vice mayor, the second was Councilwoman Vicaro. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number 21, please.
Resolution 2017-287 of the city council of the city of Fairfield, authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for the city of Fairfield Community Facilities District, number 2016-1, Villages at Fairfield, with respect to improvement Area A and approving related documents and actions.
And our presenter is Emily Collins. Emily, if you would, please.
And as Emily gets set up, I just want to quickly introduce all of you to, this type of financing does not happen on our own. It takes real, it takes a strong, great team. And so I just want to call out members of our team that are in the audience. So first of all is our builder, who we appreciate very much, Zach Wright with Lewis. He's here representing them as well as Sino, who is out there with the first phase of development underway. And then over there in the back row to my right are three very important people to us. So we have Sarah with PFM, who is our financial advisor and project manager, Anna Vandegna, who is our underwriter with Stiefel, and we appreciate the work that she's doing. And then Juan with, who's our bond counsel with Jones Hall as well. So they're a great team. They keep us on track. They keep us focused. This is one of the larger teams that I've ever worked with in financing, so I appreciate them pulling this all together very much and appreciate Zach, everything that you're doing. So I'll turn it over to Emily to introduce and talk about this item.
Thank you. Good evening. So in order to move the process forward towards getting public improvements built and financed for CFD Villages at Fairfield, with respect to improvement Area A, council is being asked tonight to approve a resolution authorizing the sale of special tax bonds, Series 2018, for an amount not to exceed $4 million, and approve related documents and actions, which includes the preliminary official statement, the continuing disclosure certificate, the fiscal agent agreement, and the bond purchase agreement. Should you approve these actions tonight, we expect to price and close by next month. Debt service will only be payable from special taxes levied annually on taxable properties within improvement Area A of the CFD and it will not have any impact on the general fund.
Any comments or questions for Emily? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just probably want to echo what the city manager said and I'm not, I don't know much about bonds. What I do know about is, we get asked continually as a body, is how can the city afford to pay for growth? And I think what needs, what is so important is that you're hearing that, well, the city pays for growth through developers and development. And we have, what, probably over an inch of paperwork dealing with the bonds and how indebted people go. So I want to say thank you to the team back there because it is, it's a very narrow field and when you start talking millions and it's going to run into the millions of dollars, this is how it gets done. The city doesn't pay for roads. And you hear a lot, well, why can't the city put in a road before they put in the houses? We don't put in the roads. We don't put in a lot of the infrastructure. Eventually, we will be paying for it, but you pay for it through the people that actually move there and live there. So that's, that's how it gets done. And it's too bad Ryan left, Ryan McCarthy from the Day of Republic, because I know, oh, there he is. Hi, Ryan. I just want to make sure that, that you're getting this. So, okay. Thank you so very, very much. Emily, well done. Thank you. Thank you to your team.
Thank you. And again, I don't have any request to speak cards, so we'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2017-287. It's been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Moy. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We turn to public comments. Item number two, please. Madam Kirk?
Item 22, public hearing and resolution 2017-288 of the city council of the city of Fairfield, authorizing staff to implement Fairfield and Sassoon Transit Fast, January 2018 service charges.
Nathaniel, primetime.
Now, if I could just get them out? That's fun. Here we go. I'll get there. Come on. Right. Oh, and then it disappears. I apologize. I'm trying to figure this out here.
Everybody's having a problem with that.
Come on. You can do it. Come on. Okay, I'm requesting a new mouse for Christmas. Three, two, one. There we go. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. What I'm presenting today is a formal public hearing and a review of the service changes that we're proposing for January to provide service specifically to the new Fairfield-Vacaville train station, overview of the major modifications to two of our routes and the minor modifications to a handful of others in order for us to make those changes and stay within our operating budget. But before I do that, I'd like to briefly take a moment to highlight the accomplishments of my staff over the course of the last year and take a couple minutes to go over some of the highlights of 2017 for Fairfield and Sassoon Transit, which includes Stuff the Bus Drive, implementing Next Bus, putting the Air Force Tribute wrap together, transitioning to renewable diesel, and receiving a significant award of $1.2 million from the FTA for electric buses. So in April of last year, we had our second annual Stuff the Bus Drive where we were able to collect just under two tons of food for Community Action North Bay and Mission Solano. We are building on that success. This year in March, we will have a two-day event at two different locations. So we're looking to ramp it up again this year in March, look for information for our third annual Stuff the Bus Drive, and hopefully we can surpass that two-ton mark and maybe get closer to three for those two wonderful charities. The second is the implementation of Next Bus. This was a three-year project to get Next Bus up and running. And Next Bus is our local phone app, which gives everybody real-time information on the location of their buses. And we implemented real-time information displays at the Fairfield Transportation Center. And we will also have real-time information displays at the Fairfield-Vacaville train station in the near future. We worked with our in-house City of Fairfield production team to create a professional 30-second commercial for Fairfield and Sassoon Transit and Solano Express. This was partially funded through MTC's Regional Measure 2 funds for us to promote our commuter services. And we received some accolades from the FTA regarding this. We submitted it for a national award for our advertising and marketing campaigns where we compete against Muni and LA Metro, excuse me. And so it'll be fun to see if we receive a reward, but we did receive federal recognition for our advertising. And Comcast has done a great job working with us as a partner to ensure that that gets put on the air as frequently as possible. We put together our Air Force Tribute bus. Now, some of you have seen that we have ads on our buses. I'm using the revenues from those ads to increase the awareness of the services that we have. And one of those efforts is to put this Air Force Tribute bus together. The bus is wrapped for a year, so just before July of 2018, we'll look to have a new wrap design ready to go. And this last time, we had a handful of representatives from the local community, some veterans as well as Air Force personnel select this over a handful of different designs. I'm looking forward to doing the same process this spring with the same team. Our renewable diesel initiative, so we integrated renewable diesel into the public works fleet. This isn't just Transit, but this is the, all of public works. Our diesel tanks are now filled with renewable diesel rather than the traditional red-dyed diesel. It was a zero impact to our fleet. There's not an increase in maintenance costs as a result of this. There was no capital cost in order to do any type of transition. This is a new diesel technology that's not biodiesel. They're calling it renewable diesel. And it comes from different locations throughout the world. There's a renewable diesel plant in Singapore. There's also one in Louisiana, which I believe our current renewable diesel is coming from. It's being shipped from Louisiana. And the cost for the renewable diesel is less than 5% more per gallon than what we were playing, paying for the traditional red-dyed diesel, but we're getting a 68% reduction in our greenhouse gas emissions. So with a minor increase in our per gallon cost, we're getting greater than 2/3 of a greenhouse gas reduction, which we thought was really good. We received a federal grant award for $1.2 million for the city of Fairfield to purchase our first all-electric zero-emission buses. There's quite a bit of work that will need to happen between now and delivery, including an upgrade to our Corporation Yard so that we can plug in the buses overnight, as well as all the specs and requirements for us to be able to put these buses on the road. But we're really looking forward to an anticipated delivery by But we're really looking forward to an anticipated delivery by mid-2020 for our electric buses. And we will use this as the starting point to hopefully begin to purchase electric buses on the regular for the City of Fairfield. And speaking of new buses, we have new commuter buses coming. We received information from MCI Today. Actually, we had a meeting with MCI Today and the anticipated delivery. I'm really hoping that we receive all nine MCI commuter buses by Christmas of 2018 rather than July 2019. So we had a good conversation with them today. They think they can really make it happen. This was a great effort, a joint procurement effort with Yuba Sutter Transit and El Dorado County Transportation Authority. The three groups are working really well together. We went through all the options today. We spent eight hours with MCI Today and our groups, and it was, it's a great effort. We're really looking forward to this partnership. And MCI has been a good partner about trying to deliver everybody's buses ahead of time because they know that we're running buses that are 15, 16 years old on the road right now, and they're recognizing that as a priority need within their distribution list for next So let's move on to the public hearing. The main reason why I'm here today. So I provided the same information to the Sassoon City Council two weeks ago, received a couple of comments from Sassoon City Council staff on some minor improvements to the services that we're providing in the City of Sassoon City. I've incorporated those changes in our discussion tonight for the presentation. With respect to public comments, I've only received two formal public hearing comments regarding the changes. They've been posted on our website two weeks in advance, and both of them have been positive with respect to adding service to the train station. There's been no negative feedback at this point in time regarding the proposal. So the first change is Route 2. So Route 2 currently goes from the Solano Mall down to Civic Center Drive, going by the Adult Recreation Center, and then heading out to Air Base and, I can't think of the name of the cross street right now, Walters, thank you, Walters Road and Air Base, and then coming back down through East Tabor to the Solano Mall. The proposal is really a streamlining of this route to make sure that we can expand the service on the back end to get to the train station. What that's going to do is increase our geographical area to cover the housing and Vanden High School access along Peabody Road, and then provide an endpoint at the train station for transfers. The downside is that this route will no longer be serving the Adult Recreation Center. However, I have a solution to that, and that's a change to Route 6, which I will bring up a little bit later. So don't forget that I've got that covered. Route 4 currently goes from the Walmart Center on North Texas and across the north side of town, down Air Base into the base itself. It has a loop inside of Travis Air Force Base and ends at the hospital. The proposal is to reduce the amount of service a little bit inside of the Travis Air Force Base and adjust the route from Air Base north to Manuel Campos. And what that does is it provides the backbone of service for the additional growth that will occur along Manuel Campos Drive over the course of the next five to 10 years. So the buses will already be there. We'll be able to add stops as that development occurs, and people will see it being out there before they move out there. Hopefully, that is a selling point. We'll also have the connection at the train station every 60 minutes, and that really addresses a lot of the requests from the base. So we're still going to provide service on the base through the commissary area. We're still providing service to the hospital. Both of those are our prime locations for people getting on and off the bus in the base. We don't necessarily need to go all the way down to First Street and cut down. So we trim it a little bit at the base, and on the flip side, we'll be able to provide service to the train station directly from the base. Route 3 is a minor proposal. The change would be to adjust from Pennsylvania down to the street that goes in front of the North Bay Medical Center, and I can't think of, yes, thank you very much, and then, go north on Fairfield Avenue. So it's a, it's a minor change, but it diverts the bus around the junior high school there, Weir Academy, the elementary school. That was causing delays with respect to traffic at that intersection, so it helps us keep our on-time performance. Route 7 and 8 currently provide service in the Cordelia community. There's this interesting loop pattern on Route 8. It's the purple one on the left, and for the life of me, I cannot figure out why it was designed that way. I've ridden the route a half dozen times over the course of the last year. There's very little ridership on what would be the east side of that middle loop portion there, whereas we have people picking up and dropping off on the west side of that. At the same time, the transfer is currently occurring at the Cordelia Library rather than the college. So Route 8 doesn't go from Cordelia to Solano Community College, which I thought was a little odd. A lot of students are transferring at the library just to get on Route 8 and go another half mile. So I made an adjustment. I streamlined the service through Cordelia. We'll have stops on both sides of the road at the locations where it makes sense to do so, and we'll move the transfer between Route 7 and 8 to the college, which gives us more room, more opportunity to sit there and ensure that the transfers are occurring. The other adjustment is Route 7 will be serving Business Center Drive rather than staying on the highway, which gives us more opportunity to ensure that the service out there grows as development and increased workforce demand increases along Business Center Drive. There's already a couple of bus stops out there, so no additional infrastructure was needed. We just weren't driving down the road, so those bus stops were being wasted. I said, let's move it over. Let's see what we can do to make that happen. And thankfully, my staff was able to find a way to make it happen and still maintain our 30-minute frequency to the college without any concerns. And Route 6 and 9. So Route 9 was somewhat of an experiment when I first came onboard, providing service from the Sassoon Senior Center to the new Sassoon Walmart. And the odd thing that occurred when we put that out there and we didn't realize it was that we were doubling the amount of traffic on Penn Tail Avenue. So I was really looking at it as an opportunity rather than a hindrance and trying to identify a way that I can take all the service between the two and see if there's a way that I can make it work on a 45-minute run. And what that does is allow me to put three buses on a 45-minute cycle so that we're maintaining half-hour frequencies on the round trip. So it's a round trip of 90 minutes, but three buses, round tripping at 90 minutes, if they're staggered every 30 minutes, maintains a 30-minute frequency. So the best way for me to do that was to see if we can serve both the Fairfield Adult Recreation Center and the Sassoon Senior Center on the same route. The trip ends at the mall and hits the Solano, or the Sassoon Walmart, and still goes through Lawler Ranch. So there's no loss in geographical coverage with respect to the change to Route 2. We're still providing service to the Senior Center. It's consistent with the way that we're providing service today. It's just a different number. We're still providing the connection between the Senior Center and the mall, and now we're actually adding a connection for the Sassoon Senior Center to the mall as well. And then both will be connected to the Sassoon Walmart. So in my opinion, this is a win-win proposal that's coming up for the adjustment between what was 6 and 9. I've been able to sit down and look at it for 18 months and really put it together into one route. So those are the changes that I'm proposing for January. Feel free to ask any questions, and I can do my best to respond to them, and then, of course, we have to open and close the formal public hearing.
Any comments or questions? Pretty impressive, isn't it? And responding as you have to the growing needs, and particularly for those folks who depend upon public transportation to get not only to the commissary but also the David Grant Medical Center, and now to the train station. Really well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathaniel. I'll open the public hearing. Don't have any question to speak cards. Saying done, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for council action, please. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2017-288? It's been moved by Councilwoman Moy, seconded by Councilwoman Bertani. All in favor? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Well done, Nathaniel.
Thank you.
Item number 23, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing and first reading and introduction of ordinance 2017-19 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, updating Section 253217 Marijuana Regulations of the Fairfield Zoning Ordinance to Reflect Changes in State Law and Directing the Planning Manager to Submit the Ordinance to the State. And first reading and introduction of ordinance 2017-20 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Amending the Existing Screening Standards for Solar Collectors, Exempting Solar Energy Systems from Zoning Code Height Requirements, and Adding a New Section to the General Development Regulations of the Fairfield Zoning Ordinance to Address Solar Energy Systems in Order to Clarify the City's Process for Reviewing Solar Energy System Applications.
And our presenter is Brian Miller. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The marijuana ordinance is primarily a minor adjustment to our, to the language in our code to reflect the state legislative actions. One of the changes I might point out is we're no longer going to be using the term marijuana. We're changing it to cannabis, which is the preferred term at the state level. We're not changing the fundamental regulations at this time regarding commercial cannabis use, production, sales, or even the production of edibles or other such substances at this time. These are minor wording changes only. The solar, second ordinance, the solar ordinance reflects a discovery we made in reviewing a project that state law has for some time prohibited us from basically regulating aesthetics of solar systems. There's a Solar Rights Act that limits our review to building health and safety-type issues. So we're clarifying that. We've been doing this as process by staff for some time. We still have the right to, and the ability to, regulate structures, such as, for example, replacing a parking lot with a series of structures with solar panels on those structures, and the ordinance makes that clear as well. Both of these actions tonight are in reflection to state requirements and regulations, and we're directed to do so by our city attorney. And I can answer any questions.
Any comments or questions? Councilwoman Moy, please.
Greg, you're telling us not to call it marijuana pot, gonj, reefer, tree. What the heck are we doing here, Mr. Politically Correct?
I have no choice.
Well, who made, I want to know who made the...
State Legislature.
Did Fraser vote for this?
I presume so.
I'm going to check it out, and I'm going to let everybody know after the first of the year, okay? Just want you to know. Really? I think they have better things to do. Now it's cannabis. Okay. All right. That's not what I hear on the street. Okay.
Councilwoman Moy, some folks couldn't spell marijuana.
Mary Jane.
Mary Jane.
I will open the public hearing. Again, have no request to speak cards. Anyone inchoosing, close the public hearing, bring it back for council action. And our first move will be to first reading and introduction of the ordinance 2017-19 and 2017-20. Is there a motion to approve?
Also, wait for the reading of the ordinance.
Wait for the reading. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Bertani. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number, item number 24. And don't get high on me now, please.
I'm sorry. I didn't pull that back from the niche.
Madam Clerk.
Okay. Public hearing and Resolution 2017-289 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Approving the Engineers' Report and Assessment Diagram Contained therein Regarding the Annexation of Territory Designated as Annexation Number 8, Discovery 2 and 3, and Goldridge 3A to the City of Fairfield Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 15, Goldridge, and the Levy and Collection of Annual Assessments Related There To Commencing with Fiscal Year And Resolution 2017-290 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Declaring the Results of a Property Owner Protest Ballot Proceeding for the City of Fairfield Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 15, Goldridge, Annexation Number 8, Discovery 2 and 3, and Goldridge 3A, and the Levy and Collection of Annual Assessments Related There To Commencing Fiscal Year 2018-2019. And Resolution 2017-291 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Ordering the Annexation of Territory Discovery 2 and 3, and Goldridge 3A, to the City of Fairfield Landscaping and Lightning Maintenance District Number 15, Goldridge, Designated as Annexation Number 8, and to Levy and Collect Annual Assessments Related There To Commencing Fiscal Year 2018-2019. And our presenter is Tom Martian from Public Works.
Tom?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Tom Martian, and Merry Christmas to you, too. Anyway, tonight we're here to complete a process, and I'd like to make one presentation in regards to the next three items connected to the one development, which is the Discovery 2, 3, and Goldridge 3A. And that would be Items 24 and 25 and 26, if that's okay with you. Okay?
No objections. Please do. Go ahead.
Well, the conditions of the approval for the developer, who is a meritage, is to annex into three special districts. One is being the LMD Number 15, which is the lighting landscape. The second one is being the CFD 2012, which is the public safety one. And the other one is LMD Number 18, Gary Falati Park. The Discovery 2 and 3A and Goldridge 3A is actually 90 units residential, and it's located up in the Goldridge Development by the Godfrey and also Noonan Road area. With this, the Goldridge subdivision is actually, is part of the larger, kind of off the Peabody location, and it's actually one of our premier locations near the train station site, as mentioned earlier. So we really look forward to them using the bus systems as well as the future train. In addition to that, by conducting the public hearing tonight, you'll be completing the ballot procedures and also determine the adoption of the resolutions for the approval for the developer to move forward. This includes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions you have any.
Comments or questions for Thomas? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
You can do each of these three items individually, so we'll do item 24 right now.
Okay. Item number 24, public hearing. Is there a motion to approve? It's been moved by Councilman Vicaro.
We'll need to, if we could just close, note the no testimony, and the hearing is closed.
I'm sorry. The hearing is closed, so there's a motion to approve. Go ahead, Councilman Vicaro.
First one would be Resolution Number 2017-289, approving Engineers' Report.
Okay. Yeah. And the Vice Mayor? Okay. And we'll take action. All in favor? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much.
And now we'll get the election results.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who seconded?
I seconded.
Oh.
I remember the motion I seconded.
And I'll open the ballot. And it's a yes vote in favor of assessment.
Okay, so the next, we can actually combine the next two resolutions, which would be Resolution Number 2017-290 and 2017-291. Motion to approve both resolutions.
Okay. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman Vicaro. All in favor? Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
We now have the hearing on item 25.
Okay. I will open the public hearing. Don't have any request to speak cards. Saying done, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back.
We have to, we do need to read the resolutions for 25. Is that right? Yes. So I was one, got one step ahead here.
I was just going to ask you that. Public hearing and Resolution 2017-292 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Approving the Engineers' Report and Assessment Diagram Contained therein Regarding the Annexation of Territory Designated as Annexation Number 2, Discovery 2 and 3, and Goldridge 3A, to the City of Fairfield Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 18, Goldridge Park, and the Levy and Collection of Annual Assessments Related There To Commencing with Fiscal Year 2018-2019. And Resolution of 2017-293 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Declaring the Results of a Property Owner Protest Ballot Proceeding for City of Fairfield Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 18, Goldridge Park Annexation Number 2, Discovery 2 and 3, and Goldridge 3A, and the Levy and Collection of Annual Assessments Related There To Commencing Fiscal Year 2018-2019. And Resolution 2017-294 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Ordering the Annexation of Territory to the City of Fairfield Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 18, Goldridge Park Designated as Annexation Number 2, Discovery 1 and 2, and Goldridge 3A, and the Levy and Collection of Annual Assessments Related There To Commencing with Fiscal Year 2018-2019. 3A, and the levy and collection of annual assessments related thereto commencing with fiscal year 2018-2019.
All right, so Mayor, now we can start the public hearing on item 25.
Again, have no request to speak cards, so we'll close the public hearing.
And the first resolution would be resolution 2017-292.
Is there a motion to approve? Been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Moy. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
City Clerk now will declare the results of the election.
It's another yes vote in favor of assessment.
So with the vote tallied, we can now have a motion to approve Resolution 2017-293 and 2017-294.
Is there a motion to approve? Again, motion made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Moy. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And the city clerk now will read the resolutions, the titles of resolutions for item 26.
Public hearing and resolution 2017-295 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, annexing of territory Discovery 2 and 3 and Goldridge 3A to a community facilities district, authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting levy of tax to qualified electors City of Fairfield Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, Annexation Number 31, and resolution 2017-296 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, declaring results of a special annexation election, determining validity of prior proceedings and directing recording of amended notice of special tax lien City of Fairfield Communities Facility District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, Annexation Number 31, Discovery 2 and 3, and Goldridge 3A.
Again, have no request to speak cards, so I'll close the public hearing.
A motion in order would be to adopt resolution 2017-295.
Been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Bertani. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
And we now have a tally of the vote by the city clerk.
And it's 16 yes votes in favor of annexation.
So the motion would be in order to adopt resolution 2017-296.
Is there a motion to approve this? It's been moved by Councilwoman Carle, seconded by Councilwoman Bertani. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
We now get to the last item, number 27. City Clerk will read the titles of the two resolutions for this one, and also we need a staff report, but we'll have the titles read first.
Okay. Last but not least, public hearing and resolution 2017-297 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, annexing of territory 1330 Travis Boulevard to a community facilities district, authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting levy of tax to qualified electors City of Fairfield Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, Annexation Number 32, and resolution 2017-298 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, declaring results of a special annexation election, determining validity of prior proceedings, and directing recording of amended notice of special tax lien City of Fairfield Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, Annexation Number 32, 1330 Travis Boulevard. The end.
Thomas, if you would, please.
All right. That's Tom Martian, and thank you for your patience. I know that many resolutions went through and did a great job over there, Karen. I'm not sure if I could have done that better. Anyway, there again, tonight's the last process of an annexation known of the development is 1330 Travis Boulevard. This project is being axed into CFD 2012-2, which provides public funding for police and also regards to open spaces and parks. The project is located at 1330 Travis Boulevard, and it's approximately 1.14 acres, and it's a commercial building being built at 6,000 square feet. By conducting a public hearing tonight, it completes the process of ballot and also determines the adoption of the resolution. So that concludes my presentation.
Any comments or questions for Thomas? Vice Mayor?
You know, just real quick, I know that our eyes roll when we get all these, but, but probably, and I think it's just probably pretty much staff here now, except for a couple folks I recognize. But I just wanted to say is that this is what pays, and again, it's the same thing. This is what pays going forward for police, for fire, for the lighting, for the maintenance. So again, like I said, we got a ton of questions on this, and this takes, I don't know how much time it takes for you guys to put this together, but the initial reading came, how long, I mean, it's, it's a long time. So we appreciate what you do. We're not laughing at you. I think we're probably laughing with you, so, but thank you. Thank you very much.
And one more.
Yeah, here we go.
Now I declare the hearing open.
Open the public hearing. Again, have no request to speak cards. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back for council action.
And first motion would be to approve Resolution 2017-297.
Been moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Carle. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
We have the final election results here for the last item here from the city clerk.
And, excuse me, and there are two yes votes in favor of annexation.
So with that, we can now proceed to adopt resolution 2017-298.
Is there a motion to approve? It's been moved by Councilwoman Carle, seconded by Councilwoman Moy. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. This was a very lengthy agenda, and staff, thank you very much for making it so efficient. And colleagues, thank you. Have a very merry and safe Christmas and a happy new year to all of you. We are adjourned until our next meeting, January 16th at 6:00 PM. Thank you very much. Good night.
Merry Christmas. Everybody.[1726.33]